I call on Vice Chancellor Denise Maybank to give her report.
Good afternoon and thank you, Trustee Sunshine. It is a great opportunity for us to be in person, and that's the part that I'm loving most about today. So it's the start of something big. And I want to begin first by acknowledging the devastation and the loss that we know has occurred around, I'm going to say, the whole Gulf area with the hurricanes and so forth, because there are a number of colleges and universities that are impacted. And I don't want to just rush past that without that acknowledgement. So if we could just take a moment of silence in acknowledgement of all that has happened, I would appreciate it. Thank you. I want to begin by talking about the University Student Senate and the fact that, over the course of the summer, there was a retreat that took all of the representatives that could go at that time to the Catskills to celebrate the 50th anniversary of the University Student Senate and to allow for the delegates to come together in togetherness and dialogue. And so I want to commend Trustee Salamatu Dembaya for the idea that made this come together in a way that built unity and connectedness among the representatives of the University Student Senate. So thank you for that, Trustee Dembaya. There was participation by our trustees, Sandra Wilkin and trustee Yuna Clark, members of the Chancellery, including the chancellor, Wendy Hensel, Glenda Grace, Hector Batista, Derek Davis, and yours truly. We all had the opportunity of sharing with the students in a most amazing experience, as far as I'm concerned. It was really a wonderful exchange and a dialogue that allowed us insight into what is happening for students. I should also acknowledge that as a part of the 50th anniversary, Jay Hirschenson was there to provide the history lesson. And Professor Hugo Fernandez joined us as well. It effectively engaged the attendees and celebrated the founding and contributions of the Senate. And we don't want to push past that without recognizing that the benefit of that unity that happened on that weekend led to an easy nomination process two weeks ago and an amazing election process just yesterday. And we have, we now know who our student trustee for the next year will be, and that is in the person of our Salamatu Dembaya. I would also like to bring to your attention the fact that we have seven campuses that are embarking on a relationship with Hill El International. And those seven campuses are Beirut, Brooklyn City College, the College of Staten Island, Hunter College, John J. College, and Queens College. They will be a part of a cohort of 17, I believe it is, campuses from around the country that will have the experience of having greater insight around what it is that students of Jewish heritage experience, as well as thinking about how to make campuses welcoming and accessible for our students. The Black Male Initiative held its 17th annual conference over the weekend showcasing students who have been touched by the campus-based programs. Among the speakers were our own chancellor, Felix Matos Rodriguez, the mayor of the city of New York, Eric Adams, and Melva Mills. Just Mills? I said, is it right? Mills? From, I'm sorry. It's okay. I'm sorry I hadn't paged down far enough, so I apologize. And so each of the speakers offered insight into what it is that the program is able to do and the manner in which it reaches students throughout the year and over the course of time, whether they be high school students or college students. And the emphasis really was on growing and becoming better and making a difference in the world. Our Immigrant Student Success Program has expanded its relationship with the Dream U.S. through career opportunities. The Dream U.S. has agreed to provide funds for paid internships to students at Brooklyn College and Queens College in particular. And the scholars will be eligible to receive funds for unpaid opportunities for the next three years. The hope is to expand these opportunities to all CUNY campuses over the summer and eventually all undocumented students as well. DACA continues to be in the news. And while most of our incoming students are not eligible for DACA or a pathway to citizenship, it continues to be a point of anxiety for some of those students. With a decision from the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals looming, the administration has announced that they are preparing to take executive action to protect DACA recipients from deportation. And our students are concerned about what it is that's happening and what it may mean for them as well. In terms of our veteran services, November 4th, 2022, there will be a breakfast and conversation on pluralism and diversity in the military at our CUNY Graduate Center. Veterans Internship, our Veterans Internship Program, which is funded through a grant from the New York City Council, has been dispersing that funding. And those peer mentors are providing services to our veteran population. The Theater Development Fund has also partnered with our veterans' programs. And they are, our students are getting to go to Broadway, to Broadway plays anytime between October and May of next year. In terms of our student athletes who are part of our wheelchair basketball initiative, the men's and women's wheelchair basketball teams will compete this season against the likes of the University of Alabama, the University of Wisconsin, and the University of Texas. And please note that there is a link that highlights the team's competitions and their activities on the website. So we encourage you to go and take a look. The CUNY's men's and women's wheelchair basketball team will be participating in the annual basketball season kickoff event at Queens College on October 13th. So if you're not doing anything, make sure you go and join them for that. And the USA Today is going to be doing a story on the adaptive sports program. So take a look for that as well. And with that, I will conclude my report at this point.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. We'll take on the following item for approval. Item, is that 2A?
2A.
2A. 101 is 2A. It is the approval of the minutes June 6th, 2022 meeting. I move the approval of item 2A.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? Item is passed. Item 2B1 is a resolution to appoint the Council of Presidents Subcommittee on Athletics to administer the university athletic conference and amend the manual of general policy to codify the transition of the administration of the university athletic conference from the Office of Student Affairs to the Council of Presidents. I now call on Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Hector Batista to provide further background.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, everyone. As the committee knows, a lot of work has been done to understand the unique position of CUNY athletics and athletic conference and to identify the opportunities that exist. After doing some evaluation work and program assessment during the 2021 academic year, we call to action council presidents from 13 campuses who are members of the CUNY Act led by President Ains. Then we formally kicked off an athletic strategic plan process this past February. There has been center dialogue engaging with lots of stakeholders to identify and address issues in advance of CUNY athletics. So based on the athletic assessment, strategic planning work, and the NCAA best practice, we know, we now need to take some formal steps with CUNY governance on athletics. Today's resolution seeks to transition the governance of CUNY Athletic Conference from student affairs to university councils. This resolution will enable us to establish a precedent oversight and align CUNY Act with the NCAA best practices in a manner that comparable to other conferences. In a hearing that was had with trustees on June 6th, we received a lot of feedback connected to this proposal. Based on that feedback, we have made the following changes. We've, as part of the university Council of Presidents, we now have an appointment from the EVC University Reporters and its DNE, and EVC and Chief Operating Officer and its DNE, and the US Chair and their DNE. This aims to assure that the program will continue to have the support of the central office from a resource perspective, as well as connection to the Student Life Committee. All areas of athletics remain the same. I will repeat, all areas of athletics remains the same. What does that mean? The VP for Student Affairs will continue to manage the individual athletic programs in their respective campuses, along with intramuros and adaptive sports. Further, we look forward to keeping this committee up to date with athletics efforts by the Chair of the university athletic conference. We also going, and its members will be coming back to this committee to report on the activity that's taking place and the deliberations taking place. And with that, I turn right back to you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
This exempts our Division II schools, right? Queens College and Staten Island?
It does. Any other questions?
No question, just a statement. I just want to thank, you know, EVC COO for, you know, working with us. I know that at the end of the last term, it looked like we were loggerheads. But I think this was a good example of when shared governance works, when folks come together and talk, work it out. I'm happy that the students, you know, have their representation and are satisfied and the changes that were made to the resolution, that, you know, let's say satisfies us to a sufficient degree that we will be supporting the resolution. So I just want to thank everybody who worked on that. I know I can be a little theatrical sometimes. That's just my style. But I'm just glad it all kind of came together. And again, I think it's, I think it's a model of shared governance that, you know, I'd like to see that we continue to work with in years to come.
Mr. Chairman, I just like to add to the trustee and actually thank my colleagues in Academic Affairs for their amazing work helping us get through this. I want to thank our general counsel for helping us sort of draft a path forward. But I also want to thank the committee and all its members. We heard you. We think that through this deliberation, we really ended up with a better process and something that I think at the end of the day really helps us student athlete, which is what we're all here for. So I want to thank you all for that. And I look forward to continuing the dialogue. And with that, I turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, this sounds like a really fair and good resolution to a kind of messy problem. Any other comments or questions? If not, move the agenda. Anybody have a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Item is passed. Welcome, trustee Lenaris Garcia, except we're about to adjourn the meeting. This is a very quick agenda. I now move, oh, wait, wait. I'm only jumping too quickly. That's why I should never chair the meeting. We need Yuna back. I now chair the information items on the agenda. Vice Chancellor Mayback, please introduce the students.
Thank you, Trustee Sunshine. As noted at the start of the meeting, it's the start of something big because it's a new year. But today, we have an opportunity once again to hear from some of our students. In the past few months, we've brought you programs and services with members of the staff and faculty. And we've made sure you've heard about the lives, accomplishments, and aspirations of our students, those that you serve and support. And today, I want to present to you a small portion of the arts at CUNY. And so we have five students who are going to share with you from their perspectives as students in our various programs. From Brooklyn College, we have students from our Master of Fine Arts Theater Program, Susan Myberg and Matthew Zimmerman. From Hunter College, we will hear from Monica Orzaleski. Okay, I wanted to make sure I was getting that one right. And then from York College, we will hear from Tiffany Tavares and Christopher CJ Wright. There's no doubt the city of New York is the campus of the City University of New York. It is where dreams are made of. There's nothing they can't do. These students, these streets will make you feel brand new. Big lights will inspire you as students of CUNY. So let's hear it for New York, the CUNY way.
My love, yay, take them all. What hast thou been more than thou hadst before? No love, my love. Which thou mayst true love call. All mine was thine before thou hadst this more. Then if thou my love receivest, I cannot blame thee for my love thou usest. But yet be blamed if thou thyself deceivest by wilful taste of what thou thyself refusest. Do forgive thy robbery, gentle thief, although ye steal thee all my poverty. Yet love knows it is a greater grief to bear love's wrong than hate's known injury. The lascivious grace in whom all ill well shows. Fill me with spites, yet we must not be foes. Hi, I'm Susan Myberg. I am a second-year MFA actor at Brooklyn College. And I'm also a graduate teaching fellow, which means that I teach undergrads. I'm teaching the acting workshop currently. And I was elected as the Schubert Scholarship recipient as well for the MFA class this year, which is a huge honor. And I chose Brooklyn College because it is a two-year program. I'm a little older, a little further in my career. And so that really suited me. The other reason I chose it is because our program head Judy Lee caps the cohorts at 10 people. So we're getting incredible one-on-one interaction with our peers, with our faculty unheard of in an acting program, not just in the city, but across the country. In addition to that, the curriculum is rich with techniques and tools that all programs teach across the country. But our faculty is out there challenging those and bringing new techniques and practices in, some of which are only being taught at a few schools. So it's a really nice balance of the traditional things that all actors learn and then also ways in which we're challenging those things and learning new techniques and practices. The last reason I chose Brooklyn College and why I knew it was the right school for me specifically, I should also say Brooklyn College is the only school I applied to. It's the only school that I, that's how I, that's how certain I was that it was the right school and the best school for me. But the reason that really I was drawn to the program is it, the pedagogy, Judy Lee, our program head, talks about her interest in really having the artist have a journey to self-discovery and that actors don't have to look or be or sound a certain way in the same way that all humans are unique, right? So is the actor. And to really come to terms with who you are as a person and what, how that informs who you are as an actor. And so with that, I would just like to close with sharing also that it was because of that reason and because of this intimacy and just this real, really beautiful family that's created that. I knew that this was also the right time and the right place for my husband and I to have a child. So this summer, we welcomed our son. So I'm getting my MFA, I'm becoming a mom, I'm doing it all in an industry where often, as a woman especially, you're told that you can't. And this program proves otherwise. You absolutely, you absolutely can't.
Congratulations.
Hi, y'all. Susan is one of my favorite actors of all time. My name is Matthew Zimmerman. I'm also a second-year candidate in the, for an MFA in acting at Brooklyn College, as well as a graduate teaching fellow. And I want to start there, actually, because I think I just had an experience on these last several Fridays. I teach at 9:30 in the morning on a Friday, which is a wild time to teach an acting class. I see some, I see the nods, yes. And one of the most incredible things is being given the freedom as an early-career educator and a student myself to radically affect how young actors are given the very basics and essences of what we do. And to bring it up in a way that acknowledges historical inequity, a lack of diversity in our industry and in education in our industry, and where our techniques come from. And to create alternative offerings that empower these students and model the way that we, we train as graduate-level actors, which comes with that full acknowledgement. And so we don't simplify this or make it any less radical for these intro students. That's been an incredible moment for me as an actor and an educator. Something else I want to point out is that we, we just discussed, this is our campus, New York City is our campus. And what drew me to this program was knowing that I was going to be a part of the arts community of this city. And there's nothing wrong with the commercial sense of that idea, of Broadway and of a massive film and television industry. But the arts in New York City are the undergirding of our culture. And it's hundreds of years of history. And students who attend Brooklyn College, or I assume any CUNY arts program, are connected to that. We have an intimate relationship with, say, the Public Theater, which is one of the great arts institutions of this city. And thereby, this city being one of the great theater cities in the world, you know? We have powerful connections with them. We meet the people who work there. Our students are interning there. Or we meet, one of our great relationships is with the woman who, Heidi Griffith, who is the casting director there. And, but these are not just built on commercial exchange or a sort of just a professional tie. But these are intimate. They feel like our friends, that we're a part of this network and community, which has been really powerful and connects us to this city. You don't, you know, we're not in San Sebastian somewhere hidden away, and then we emerge to come back, and now we're the artists. We're in that practice every day of how are you going to live and work in this city and service this city, which I feel as an artist, as a citizen artist, first and foremost, that CUNY and CUNY Brooklyn College has really allowed me to rest into that vision. And now, in the spirit of what we do, which often says that, which is most specific, is most universal and accessible, there's a poem that every graduate actor at Brooklyn College learns and comes to engage with. And I won't talk about it. I'll just say that it's called "Wild Geese" by Mary Oliver. "You do not have to be good. You do not have to walk on your knees for a hundred miles through the desert repenting. You only have to let the soft animal of your body love what it loves. Tell me about despair, yours, and I will tell you mine. Meanwhile, the world goes on. Meanwhile, the sun and the clear pebbles of the rain are moving across the landscapes, over the prairies and the deep trees, the mountains and the rivers. Meanwhile, the wild geese, high in the clean blue air, are headed home again. Whoever you are, no matter how lonely, the world offers itself to your imagination, calls to you like the wild geese, harsh and exciting, announcing over and over your place in the family of things."
Hi there. My name is Monica Jawwowski. I'm the double theater and philosophy major at Hunter College, also pursuing the Arts Management and Leadership Certificate. And I'm also a MUSE scholar. And the MUSE Scholarship Program is kind of the first place that I want to start out with, with my expansive experiences at Hunter in the Arts of Humanities. The MUSE Scholarship Program is a four-year scholar program for academically inclined and artistically talented students. In addition to a scholarship each year, which is fantastic, we also, in our first year of the program, are required to take a course called Exploration of the Arts, where we are exposed to various art forms, theater, film, opera, dance, whatever you're thinking, we're probably learning about it. And not only are we learning about it inside the classroom, we're really taking the whole, CUNY is your campus, the city is your campus, mindset and taking these classes outside, seeing professional performances done by all of these various art forms. For myself and for a lot of the students in my cohort and anyone who has really gone through the program, this is our first time going to an art museum or our first time going to a dance performance. And that is something that is so exciting because otherwise, you don't really know how you could be exposed to these, like, exciting art forms without some sort of introduction into it. One of the big questions that we discuss in this class are, is the question of, like, what is art? Which, if you've ever considered it, you kind of go into a huge rabbit hole of trying to find the answer. And my first year of college, when I came in just from high school, I spiraled trying to find an answer for this question. Like, I wanted a definition. I wanted a clear-cut answer. And no one was going to give that to me. And so I went up to my professor, Dara Myers Kingsley, who is the leader of the program and also teaches this class. And she suggested I take a course called Aesthetics in the Philosophy Department, which is the study of art. I took her up on the suggestion, and it changed my life. The class quite literally changed my life. After that one single class, I enrolled in a second major in philosophy. Already did it. Because this pursuit of knowledge is kind of what I've been seeking my entire life. I just finally found words to put to the study of what this is. My first major is theater. And I'm not an actor. I will not be performing with you. But I am a designer, a stage manager, a technician. And that is not something I thought I was going to do when I first entered Hunter. I thought I was going to be an actor. But then I was exposed to all these various opportunities. And I have been offered and have taken professional jobs, being a stage manager, being a line designer, being a sound designer. And I still have a semester and a half to go at Hunter while being a student. Not only that, is that last semester with the Hunter Theater Department through the low internship fund, I was able to take on a paid internship with the 24-hour plays. And then I was offered back a position as a marketing and development assistant there, which I'm actively working on. I'm also starting as a Lincoln Center intern tomorrow, which is another, thank you. It's a very exciting day. But it's through, what I've learned at Hunter through some really great faculty members, really supportive faculty members, even through the course of the pandemic, when a year and a half of classes were online, my faculty were still met with a strong desire to teach us something. And when we returned in person, I found faculty members who were so willing to be there for us to make up for what we've, what we lost for a few years. who were so willing to be there for us to make up for what we've, what we lost for a few years. So thank you so much for letting me share with my highlights.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'd like to take this opportunity right now to simply say thank you so much for inviting the students from York College to be in this meeting with you all and share our perspective on student life and how it is on campus. So genuinely, patting back to all of you for allowing this to happen on the first place. And thank you to all the other students from all these other institutions that are giving great presentations and perspectives that I would have never had because I'm not students over there. Anyways, back to the importance. I'm going to be speaking on the York College music program and the amazing things it's done for me as a musician and as a student overall. But before I get to that, I'm here with my colleague, also my vice president for music club, CJ Wright. Say something.
Yes.
I just. We're both music performance majors currently, although I will be enrolling in the music education program here come this fall when it fully rolls out. York College has provided for me several different things. I'm actually a transfer student from a different CUNY institution. I transferred from Queens College to York College in the fall of 20, I think it's 2021 or 2020. But what I noticed from both music programs is that York College provided for me a home, a community. The diversity is well-known in the Queens area, but York College has students from all around the globe. And in the music program, I felt the most welcome there. I had a home, I had a place to speak to people. And that comfortability isn't always there, especially in these music spaces. We already know how difficult the arts world is, especially when we're talking about music. But when you're studying and learning to really become a professional, you need the space to truly become the best person you can be. And that is what has been provided to me through York College. And on top of that, York College has a curriculum that I don't really see other institutions, and I'm not talking CUNY-wise, I'm talking nationwide, that isn't provided. We have freedom to select what pieces we really wish to choose to play. It isn't just Western European classical music, which is the standard repertoire. And I'm not saying there is anything wrong with that, because, trust me, I love me some page open. But I am going to say that I am a Colombian Dominican woman who likes to also play her heritage's music and who also likes to learn about different cultures' music. I think there's so much importance in that. And as a future educator, incorporating that into my future curriculum for my students to truly get the best, well-rounded education they possibly can. And without further ado, we'll give you an example. Did I block you?
Yes.
I'm so sorry. Any questions during the stuff?
The one question would be, your program is a conservancy program, is that correct?
You say that again.
York, is it a conservancy program or is that Queens College?
At Queens College, it's a conservatory. At York College, we have a little bit more liberty on a lot of studies, and that's what I really enjoy about it, because most institutions don't allow that, especially during your undergraduates, which I think is extremely vital. Let me go.
Thought I found a way. Thought I found a way out.
But you never go away. So I guess I gotta stay now.
Oh, I hope someday I make it out of here.
Even if it takes all night or a hundred years.
Place to hide, but I can't find one end.
I wanna feel alive, but I can't find my feet. Isn't lovely alone?
Hard made a glass, my mind of stone.
Tear me to pieces, skin and bone.
Hello, welcome home.
Our thanks to you all for sharing your experience at CUNY that allows us to know, oh, I'm sorry. That allows us to know that in this public space, we can expand and we can make a difference in the world of art beyond anything we do for science, technology, engineering, math, all of the STEM pieces. We also touch the lives of people as they grow and as they live and as they become a part of this experience that is New York, New York. So thank you. We can, we can wait and do it. Who's background?
Let's start dropping the mic.
Only Denise.
Yeah, right.
Save it for when the Yankees win.
Thank you.
Let me just say, part of the job of being a trustee is not exactly exciting. I'm looking at Myra right now. And we deal with crises and problems and the, you know, challenge of urban university in 21st century America. It's incredibly frustrating, and there's never enough money, and we have to deal with politicians. I've dealt with politicians my whole life, and I wish I never dealt with a politician. The greatest thing about being a CUNY trustee is any interaction with students on any level and faculty, too. But, yeah, I must say, particularly students. And this just gives me a thrill, and it shows what it's really all about. And I thank, I thank you for programming. We may do this every meeting, by the way.
We do. We try to.
I know the chair quite well, I think she would agree. And I just thank you all, and thank you for your creativity and your spirit and your creative vision in a time where we really need it as a society. And the city really needs it, too, so thank you. Professor?
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, I've been on this committee, it feels like, I think it's been eight years. I don't think I've ever seen a presentation like this. And I just want to thank the vice chancellor for highlighting the arts. I got to tell you, I hear STEM, STEM, STEM. And I don't have a problem with STEM. But the last time I checked, this, this city has, you know, the thriving film business, the Broadway, well, you know, we have the gallery scenes, we have a music industry. Those jobs, and those industries bring the tourists. People come to New York to see that. They're not coming to see laboratories. And I got to tell you that, you know, hook, getting together with these unions and jobs and getting our kids in there, that is experiential learning, that is internships, and it generates dollars. And the fact that we don't take more advantage of it, you know, is, is again something that I wish we did. And so I just want to thank you for that. And just to mention as well that, you know, CUNY arts, which has gone, you know, had its own struggles during COVID, I think is trying to have a resurgence. They have a relationship with the public theater, and we can only hope that that grows. Because it's, one of the things we also have to do for the city is to, is to, is to teach our students to be consumers of the arts, to appreciate some of the things that we saw today. And that's how, you know, we have to be full circle in, in our relationship with the city. So thank you.
I, I must say one thing without, at risk of being a little bit personal here. The, the business of entertainment, forget the creative arts, obviously, we love it, and it's what makes New York, New York. But the business of entertainment is a huge business, and there are many jobs, and there are many jobs that people don't know about. My day job certainly included a lot of that, but I'm hardly the only one. And it's, it's weirdly almost underreported and not talked about, whereas real estate and finance and all these fancy industries that, of course, want a lot from the city and from government. Entertainment business wants virtually nothing from business, except bring the tourists here and, and let us create. So it's the best in New York and, you know, the role that CUNY plays. We should do, as much as we're doing, we should do more and better. And suddenly, we have an advocate in, in Myra and May and, and Michael, for sure.
You go, you're, you're talking about STEAM, not just STEM. Yeah, exactly. Thank you, Michael, STEAM. STEM in the arts. I support that as well.
I just wanted to thank you all. That was so beautiful. And it's, Ken is right, it's, it's part of a passion point for us, right? I mean, that's why we make the big bucks here. But, but, you know, to the new mom saying, I can still do this, to the inspiring teacher for young students, you know, sharing how for some of our students, this is the first time they're going to be exposed to a museum or theater. You know, when you said that, it's just so true. And then just this beautiful rendition, you know, from York College. I love your passion and, and the fact that you feel that there's a freedom and there's a home and just the fact that we have options within our own system that people can take. So, you know, and, and the diversity of roles that you can have and can touch. It's not just theater, it's not just singing, but it's, it's the back, the front, the lighting, you know? And, and being able to expose our students to amazing faculty like you had, you know, to, to open that. I just, I just want to commend you, Vice Chancellor Mayback. What a way to drop the mic today with this meeting. No one else is going to win today about this. Thank you all.
Absolutely. All right, back to the mundane. I'll screw this one up, too. Next information item is the committee charter. As you know, today is the first meeting under our new committee structure. As part of the restructuring work, each committee will operate under a new committee charter to be discussed by each committee, then approved by the Governance Committee, and then sent to the Full Board for approval. Our agenda included the draft as an information item for discussion. Are there any questions or comments? Also, Deputy Secretary Anne Fenton is available for any questions or, or comments. Any other questions with no more agenda items? I move to adjourn this terrific meeting.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned.